Good evening. Welcome to the December 6, 2022, meeting of the Dover Sherburne Regional School Committee. My name is Maggie Sharon and I call this meeting to order at 6:32 PM. Information about how to join school committee meetings and meeting agendas are posted on the Dover Sherburne District website. And I'd like to please note that this meeting is being recorded this evening. Our first order of business is public comment, is an opportunity for public comment. Do we have anyone tonight planning to make a public comment, either here or on the Zoom link?
We have one school committee member on the Zoom link, but no public.
Okay. And so just let the record reflect that all five members are here in person and Kate Potter is joining us tonight from Zoom. Okay. We don't have anyone here in the audience who wants to make a public comment. I did receive an email communication today from a parent who has asked that I read her comment into the record. I will then read the preamble. Community comments are an opportunity for members of the community to be heard. We respectfully request that you make your comments brief, no more than three minutes, and that you move the discussion forward by adding new information and try to avoid repeating points that have already been made. Community comments are an opportunity for the school committee to listen to members of the community. It is not a forum for answering questions or engaging in debate. Once the public comment section of the meeting has been concluded, we will move on to other business and unsolicited comments from the community will no longer be permitted. This is standard operating procedure in school committee meetings across our three school districts. I believe our only community comment is from a parent, Bethany Burke of Dover on, I believe, Claybrook Road. She has asked to please read this into community comments for tonight's meeting. Thank you for allowing me to comment. My comment is regarding the lack of LGBTQ policies and protocols for the schools. After the video playing in the middle school last week, there needs to be clarity about how LGBTQ teaching books and materials are going to be used in the schools. For the sake of clarity and transparency, the schools need policies and protocols written by the school committee. I've asked a few times since June of last year if the school has anything official on this matter, and there is no policy, still no policy. In the meantime, we've had teachers asking sixth graders about their pronouns and whether or not they can be used in front of parents. And we've had a video created by sixth grade, the sixth grade GSA club consisted of LGBTQ names and definitions with their sexual preferences. Also, there is a lot of confusion over how to get an LGBTQ book list from the school and who has oversight over the books and whether the books have been thoroughly reviewed by the school committee and administration. Parents must be included in these policies so that they can make informed decisions about their children's education and mental health. There are federal, state, and parental rights laws, but not having a school policy is leaving the door open for trouble and bringing distrust between parents and school administration. So I'm asking you to please put some, put into place LGBTQ policies and protocols. I look forward to hearing from you more about these issues as the year progresses. Thank you, Bethany Burke. Are there any other community comments? Okay. In that case, the community comment section of our meeting is closed. And our next order of business, hang on. Scroll. Sorry about that, is to hear our reports. And the first report tonight is from Superintendent McCoy.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Mrs. Potter, I apologize, you're gonna have to reference your packet because I can't share a screen and have it up here at the same time. So we're gonna lose you for a minute. So the only update I have tonight is just to bring everybody up to speed with the full day of professional development we had last Monday. And I just want to make sure that all gratitude and appreciation goes to Denny Conklin, our assistant superintendent, who led the charge in terms of planning the day. I wish you were here this evening to share it with you, but I promised I would do my best in his absence. He worked closely with Dawn on a lot of the details, so thank you, Dawn, for your help. He had a committee of teachers and leaders from each of the four schools. And our lunch was supported by the PTOs and CSAs from all four buildings. So many thanks to them for supporting our teachers to be nourished throughout the day.
Wonder if you just need to put up your, you're going on and off.
Oh, maybe the box.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You gonna hold it?
Sure. I can smooth that. Is that better?
Yep.
Look at that. Ready? Teamwork.
Okay. Well, yes. It's just gonna be blanky, I guess.
So all of our educators, we came to the region on that Monday and started in the auditorium to launch our day. I had a little bit of a brief introduction just to welcome everyone and remind people of our mission to inspire challenges for all students as they discover and pursue their full potential. And then I really launched into the five reasons why it's so important for us as a district to be engaging in the DEI work. The first is because the easiest answer is we have to, per state, federal, and local policies.
It's not showing.
No.
Oh, now it's back.
The second is research says it's very important when you look at MasLabs hierarchy. We all know that unless students feel safe and have food and shelter and then psychological safety and social emotional wellness, learning can't happen. So we have to make sure that all of our students have a sense of belonging. It's central to learning. And when children and young people feel that they are truly part of a learning community, they are more prepared to learn and thrive. So first, we have to because of laws. Second, because research says so. Third is because our own data says so. And of course, we've been looking a lot at the data from the equity audits. This data I pulled from the Metro West Youth Adolescent Health Survey, which we had a presentation on last meeting. So just to give an example, when we ask students if they feel like they're a part of our school, if they feel like they belong, our white students at the high school level, I believe that's 70%, 70% of them say yes. So there's 30 out of every 100 students who don't yet feel like they're fully a part of the community. And then as we go through different groups, students with disabilities, you see the numbers drop off to 63%. Non-white students, 61%. And our LGBTQ students at 53%. So clearly, we have work to be done to make sure that our students feel that they belong in our, in our safe in our schools. And I think it's important to notice while looking at a bunch of dots or numbers on paper is one thing, that each of these dots represents a child who belongs to a family and is the sector of their universe. And we need to make sure that all of our students feel safe and supported in our school environment. The third reason to do this work is because, excuse me, the fourth reason, is that it's better for everyone. While most of our students are thriving in the Dover Sherburne schools, we want to make sure that continues. But working on DEI work provides opportunities for all students to see themselves in the curriculum, to learn about other identities aside from their own, to think critically about multiple perspectives on a topic, and to prepare themselves to collaborate in a multicultural world. And last but not least, we need to do this work because we work for kids day in and day out, and the kids are telling us either in person or on paper that we have work to be doing, work to be done around the sense of belonging. So after the keynote, which is really not a keynote, we launched into a student panel, which I will talk about in a moment. Then for the second half of the morning, educators got to choose workshops, which I'll show you examples of in a minute. We had lunch together in Lincoln Commons as a pre-K through 12 community. And then the afternoon was spent in grade level teams or departments, grade six through 12, to kind of debrief what was learned from the morning. Because oftentimes you'll hear, we learned a lot, but we didn't have time to do anything with it. So we made sure that the afternoon was time to process and say, what am I gonna take back to the classroom? Denny laid some norms in terms of how we talk about this work and how we engage with each other. We shared a poem. If you haven't read the untitled poem, I suggest you do that. And then the afternoon was again about what did you learn and what are you gonna take back to your classroom? But certainly, the highlight of the day was the student panel. We had 10 middle and high school students representing about different races, religions, cultures, backgrounds, beliefs, sexual orientations, gender identities, sharing their experiences in the Dover Sherburne schools. And I want to thank both Denny and Ann Deverke and the assistant principal at the high school for organizing that panel. A few of the questions they answered, their answers were just so powerful. First one, as we look to grow in the area of equity and inclusion, can you share an experience from your time at DS that gave you hope? As we look to grow in this area, based on your experience in DS, where is our need for work in these areas? Can you think of a specific time when you experienced a microaggression during the school day? How did this shift your ability to focus and learn that day? What are some practices in our schools and classrooms that have made you feel supported, seen, and important? What could we do differently and instill that would make students feel supported, seen, and important? What would you tell your younger self about school and diversity, equity, inclusion? And how will your time here at DS shape your experiences after graduation? And there was not a opportunity for staff to ask questions at the end. I will say, there's others who were present there. There was lots of reactions from the audience to the student panel. There was laughter at times, there were tears at times, there were gasps at times of shock. And I think Denny framed it well. Where after that, you know, hour that we had with the students, I think we all needed a little time to collect ourselves and think about what we just heard before we could move on to the next workshop. And I think the standing ovation that the students got from the entire faculty and the length of time it went on for was very telling of how the faculty received that information and those voices. So thank you to the students who participated. After that, we broke into workshops for the second half of the morning. There was a variety of topics, as you see here. Some were offered on Zoom and some were offered in person. Ideally, they would have all been offered in person. But that said, we had access to certain workshops, such as understanding our Muslim students, where it would have been nearly impossible to get that presenter here. So providing a Zoom option allowed us to have access to that experience and content. And that was kind of an overview of the day. I just wanted to share some of the feedback that came in from the exit survey. Denny went through and kind of compiled it. I won't read you all five pages, but I'll give you a few highlights. The student panel was overwhelmingly, was overwhelmingly the highlight of the day for teachers and staff. 82% of our staff rated it as a five out of five. And the 13% rated us as four, with just, you know, a few others who might have felt otherwise. One of the quotes about the student panel, hearing from the DS students was very eye-opening. To hear about the ways in which they've been targeted, belittled, and ridiculed for identity markers was incredibly disheartening while simultaneously being absolutely necessary to sit in that uncomfortability and understand that there is an immense amount of work to be done in honor that we are taking a step forward in that journey. Another key theme in the feedback was that the morning workshops allowed teachers' choice and voice to pick a topic they wanted to explore in more depth. One of the comments, the understanding Muslim students workshop was fantastic. I learned a lot about the culture and how it may impact a student's experience at school. I also thought the student panel was powerful. Another quote, great conversation around empathy, what it is, how it can be used to start a conversation, an important piece for understanding and supporting one another. Third theme from the feedback, teachers and staff appreciated time in the afternoon to debrief the morning sessions with each other. And some wanted more of that time for conversation. Teachers want to continue this work and want more support in doing so. And just suggestions for improvement for PD in the future. More specific professional development for various departments, such as special ed. Again, the more people we can have in person versus Zoom, the better. They wanted more time to attend more workshops, so I guess we have to invent more time in the day. And then more conversations with each other. So overall, just an extraordinary day. And again, thank you to Denny and his team and Dawn for putting that together. And that's my ending.
Comments or questions from the school committee? Okay. Just huge thank you to your whole team for putting that workshop together. I know I heard from some of your faculty, particularly a number of teaching assistants that, you know, I just ran into at the grocery store, a couple this, over this past week, who were, A, very delighted to be part of the day, I know sometimes that's not possible, and be specifically called out the student panel as being just, you know, someone said, I could have listened to that for seven hours. And expressing extreme gratitude to the students who are willing to put themselves forward. I think that takes a lot of vulnerability and safety. And the fact that we have students in our community who would be willing to have those conversations really speaks to all of you guys too, and the work that you've done. Even though it's maybe that we have work to do, it makes me feel good that there are people willing to take that risk because that's, that's no small ask.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, my computer is now going to sleep.
It's the principal reports.
Yes. Principal reports. Thank you. We'll let this wake up.
Mr. Smith?
Yep. Thank you.
Hi, thank you, Ms. McCoy. I'm Sharon. You know, as Ms. McCoy said, from the high school perspective, the day was very, very powerful. Student panel was outstanding. I was really proud of those individuals who came and spoke. And it was interesting, today we had the full chance to debrief at our faculty meeting this morning, and we talked about some next steps. We talked about bringing back student panels on a more regular basis because that clearly had a huge impact. We witnessed that at an admin retreat a few years ago and spoke so highly of it, and we've had a couple now. So there was definitely interest in that. Faculty was also really appreciative in the afternoon. They were given some six to 12, grade six through 12, time for the curriculum and kind of seeing who's teaching what and how are we using DEI principles to incorporate into our teaching. And then just a chance to kind of get to know one another, because I think that with the pandemic, we missed some of that, and we've hired a lot of new people, and there's a lot of new faces. So I think that was, that was great. You know, no doubt that we have a lot of work to do. You know, I think these past three weeks have been challenging in different ways and have shown that we have lots of work to do in different areas. So I think that not only is the audit incredibly valuable, but it also gives us a springboard for areas to focus on, short term, you know, medium term, and long term. I do think we have a really good school system, but like all systems and all corporations, there is always things that can be improved. I mean, that's just natural. And I think that we're developing that mindset where we're evolving and it's growth. If we're gonna model that for our kids, we need to also model it as adults. So we definitely have a lot of work to do, but that being said, a lot of great things happening. Each month, I give you a couple departments that you can kind of see some things that are going on. Teachers are working really hard on the curriculum. We're really grateful that things are back to kind of a sense of normalcy within the classroom setting. Kids have definitely discussed that with me in the hallways and have felt really good about that. As you can see, in our athletic performance this fall was outstanding. Our fall play was outstanding. We have a bunch of concerts coming up, which kids are really excited about, and a chance to sort of showcase their, their talents. We also have been able to incorporate a lot of our travel clubs, like our math team. Our science Olympiad team is heading out tomorrow to Walpole. We have our mock trial team that's going back. So these are all great things that can be incorporated into the curriculum and help to enrich the curriculum. You know, and we're at this point now where a lot of our seniors are waiting to hear from schools too, so it's definitely a stressful time for them. And we're trying to do whatever we can to sort of help counter that a little bit. Our PTOs, the high school PTO has just been fantastic. They've had a de-stress day. Today, they were so kind, they brought in, they had a cookie swap. And we probably had about 20 dozen cookies in the teacher's room. I mean, just fantastic. Really, really generous of them and just a nice touch for brightening somebody's day. And we had an early faculty meeting, so I think that the timing was perfect to be able to go in there with your coffee and have a couple cookies. And just grateful that we, we work in a district that supports its people. So happy to answer any questions from the report or anything else. And I know that later on, we have the program of studies, and I'm certainly happy to answer anything for that.
Any questions from the report? I don't have any specific questions, but I did read it in good detail. And there's, there's a lot going on. And I really appreciate in most of the reports, I specifically thinking about the English Department, the attention that they're paying to not only making sure to meet the kids where they are, but also to revise the curriculum and make sure to be including things, be thinking more about what kids are looking for, and also making sure, just it's very clear. And if anybody hasn't been able to read the packet, it's a great way to just check in on what's going on and really appreciate the things that you guys are doing.
Yeah, thank you.
The British Lit and stuff, I was like, I'm not gonna take the Litt. I'm a little too old.
Never, never.
Like, they're really, kind of a lot of comparisons.
Yeah. Yeah, Ms. Donahue's done a really nice job. She has a wonderful Twitter account, if you don't already follow it, that gives you a lot of interesting updates as to what's happening and what kids are doing. And Ms. Andrews in the social studies department is also doing a ton of work, just kind of showcasing what happens. You know, it's one of the things where it's harder, I think, as a high school parent, kids want a little more space. But as parents, you still very much want to be involved and know what's going on. And that's just a couple ways that you could do that.
Yeah, I follow those. Those are good Twitter accounts that keep you in the loop of what's happening.
All right. Maggie, I have a delayed reaction to the, to the student panels and the DEI work. Which I think, I think that's, it's great work. I want to premise it with, because I'm gonna say a but, or take into consideration, not a but. Let's make sure moving forward as we do these panels, that we're being intentional about what the objective is. Because if the objective is to remind people that hate exists in our community, I feel like, let's think about who we're trying to convince and who doesn't know that already. Because, you know, I think the people who are subject to the hate find these panels, you know, on the one hand, sort of, what is that, self-affirming, but on the other hand, exhausting and really triggering. And, and it's also, you know, it's sort of formalizing the approach of asking our BIPOC and, you know, marginalized students to educate us around what's happening in our schools. And they told us through the surveys, they told us through the letters, they told us through the panels, they told. If we don't get it by now, we're not gonna get it. So I think to the extent we're trying to convince people that we need to do this work, if you're not convinced yet, you're not gonna be. And, and again, I think it is great that we all understand each other's worlds, because I'm shocked at the extent to which we all live parallel lives and have no idea what each other is going through on a number of different levels. But let's be super intentional about this because it, it's, it's hard on the people that are experiencing it. And, you know, I'm very proud of the students that are able to, to speak to this, to speak to their own truths. But let's be super intentional about, you know, putting these kids through this again and, you know, make sure, because what they're saying, if we don't know it by now, that's on us.
Yeah. I think that's a very valid point. And I think Denny was, and Ann were very careful about the students that they asked and the opportunities that the students had to either volunteer or say no, thank you. I think this, we looked at this as kind of a one-time opportunity. While we would love to have these voices be heard in the community to people who need to see it more so than on paper, we are very protective of them and realize that we're probably not going to have another panel like this again. You know, and Dawn mentioned the panel a couple years ago, that was specifically about kind of portrait of graduate innovation and student-centered learning. So it was a different topic. But it's, it's a great point, and I think we will be careful moving forward on how we do this. But I will say, and, you know, feel free to jump in, you know, it's one thing for a teacher to read this on paper or to have their classroom experience, but to understand from the elementary's perspective of some of the experiences that are happening in the middle and high school and hearing it from their former students or in the classroom next door at the high school, I think the teacher has found it much more powerful than, than reading it. And I think it reminded them after the pandemic, since it's been a couple of years that we've done some DEI PD, again, you know, we need to reinvest as we make sense of this audit. But thank you, guys. We will be careful moving forward.
Thanks. Thank you, Mom. All right, Mr. Lawrence.
Yeah, hi. Thanks. I'll try not to duplicate too much at this point, but let's see. So it's December now, so I'm, I feel like I found my sea legs a little bit as a new principal. And, I'm trying to get the point I was trying to make with that. Yeah, so now I'm kind of in the grind and, you know, planning, trying to plan, trying to balance, I guess, the big, the big things that we want to accomplish throughout the year with still the daily operations and all of the, all of the, the details that are still new to both Tracy and me. So I think we, we both feel like, I think we're in a, a good place, but it's challenging. It's definitely challenging. And hoping year two will feel simpler and easier and can kind of focus on those big rocks even more. Couple things to just point out. I'm really, I was really excited by the Turkey Journey that we had. It was really fun. Big shout out to Assistant Principal Sokolowski, Tracy, who really spearheaded that and got lots of volunteers from, from staff, from kids, from parents to make that a reality. And it was a really glorious day. It was a, it was a beautiful day. We got really lucky. And it just felt like a big exhale. And I think everybody really enjoyed it. The kids for sure, and, and the staff, every single staff member that I ran into during the day just was remarking about how, how great it was and how much fun it was to be able to interact with the kids in this way. So really pleased about that. I think there was a lot of enthusiasm and hope that might, we might be able to do something before December break of a similar nature. And we're not sure what that is yet, but just, you know, something to bring some, some joy and community together. So we're working on that next. I have a parent or caregiver focus groups coming up. So tomorrow, I've got three sessions throughout the day, morning, afternoon, and evening, two in person and one through Zoom. And I'm really eager to hear feedback from parents about what they're hoping for, for the middle school experience for their kids, what they love about DS and about the middle school, and their hopes and dreams for how it can grow and change to better meet the needs of their kids. So I'm very excited about that and will be continuing to have meetings like that also with students and continuing with staff. And then hopefully in January, we'll, I'll be able to share some of my preliminary thoughts with folks about what I've learned. I have in my notes to talk about the full day of professional learning, but I think that's, that's all been said. So I'll leave you with the most important thing of all, which is the SpongeBob musical. Get your tickets. It's gonna be Thursday, Friday, and Saturday nights, as well as Saturday matinee. And I assume tickets are still available, but they're going fast. And I can't wait to see it. The kids have worked so hard on that, as have the adults, I know, who have worked with them. It's a whole army of folks. And I've heard DS puts on a good show, so I'm really excited to see it. And that's all I've got.
Well, thank you. Thank you for your report. And I was really excited to hear about the Turkey activities on Wednesday. I think that's a really challenging day to motivate kids to come to school sometimes and also to, to make it such a joyful experience. And, and I echo everything you say about SpongeBob. It's the, it's the hot ticket of the weekend, everybody. Don't miss it. Other comments and, and questions? Yeah?
I did like the Turkey activities. My son, because my son goes, I don't know, am I going? I was like, yeah, you're going, because I'm taking like two dozen donuts and some drinks. I said, I was gonna volunteer, and he gave me the slip, like, no, you're not. And I was like, but I'm not gonna volunteer. And then when he got in the car, I said, how was he? He goes, that was really awesome. I was like, oh, thank you.
Glad to hear it. Glad to hear it.
I think that's a big part of what was oftentimes lost in the past couple years, you know, in between, you know, having, you know, being away and then being in Zoom and being hybrid and trying to catch up to be able to have an opportunity to inject some joy back into school is a really big deal. Thank you. All right. The warrant report is in your report. Are there any other questions for Dawn about the warrants? All right. Next item, and it does say it's an actual required, but it's not. This is our first reading of the proposed changes to the program of studies. Thank you for the link to the program of studies, as well as the very, very thorough explanation of what all the changes Thank you for the link to the program of studies as well as the very, very thorough explanation of what all the changes were. I really appreciate it. John, do you want to speak to it?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Colette Cronin, who is one of our administrative assistants in the guidance office. And one of her primary responsibilities is the program of studies. She has put a lot of work into this, changing formats, making it easier to read. So she's done a lot of work. As I had said to the superintendent last week, really not a lot of major changes, just a lot of wordsmithing and removing some things that were no longer necessary, such as some of the COVID policies. And just kind of, you know, updating some things that needed to be. Obviously, we, we don't next year have any new courses, but we likely will the following year because we're doing some work this year, kind of auditing our computer science program and looking at that, ways to enhance that. And then we're also looking at interdisciplinary coursework. Shortly after the end of the year vacation, we're going to be sending some folks from a couple of different departments over to some of our colleague's schools in Concord, Wellesley, and probably Weston that do have some interdisciplinary courses to look at ways in which they've incorporated those. How does that work? What does that look like for staffing? How does that work for student selection? And that will be something that obviously we're hoping to move towards in the future. We're still trying to determine which departments it's going to be. You know, sometimes it naturally comes in the humanities, but you can actually create it using really any departments. It's just, you've got to have the right people together and then time to develop the curriculum. And, you know, those interdisciplinary courses do take, take some time, yet they are well worth it. And that's what our goal is down the road. So I'm happy to answer if there's anything specific in here. English had the majority of the alterations and the changes just because really in the last couple of years, Ellen Shagnan and myself and Colette have gone through and kind of cleaned some things up. And then I think Gretchen, you know, who's constantly evolving and looking at the curriculum, has made some adjustments to the curriculum as we go through. Math kind of, I think, spelled out there. Adding, dropping of a course. It's much more open-ended now. So students and families actually have a lot more flexibility in doing that. We just have some things in place to make sure that we have the right data to then say to them, okay, well, here's the data we have. Because ultimately in the end, if you want as a parent and a student, you can in fact override into other courses. And that change has been made.
Okay. Thank you. Questions for John on the changes? All right. This, we will have a second read of this next time that we meet and we will vote to accept them. So if there are, as you have a chance to delve deeper into it, or when the packet comes next month, sort of substantive questions that you have, let, let us know ahead of time so that we will be able to get them to John in time to make any changes. But looks good. And that, that was clearly a thorough, you went through the whole thing with a fine tooth comb, and I appreciate that. All right. Next, Dawn, monthly report.
Yes, so you have your financials as of November 30th. As we have been doing in the past, only keeping your running narrative and including bold, the new information. There's really very little bold, but the good news is that we are going to be looking at a little bit more investment income, bank interest than we really nosedived last year. But our treasurer this fall moved sort of basically our E and D, right? Our reserve into the Massachusetts Municipal Depository Trust. And we are actually seeing close to 3% interest income on that. So it started kicking in in like October. I'm giving, I think, a low estimate of the variance because I don't want to go too high and something happen. But at least we'll be exceeding our budget this year in that line item unlike the last two years. So that's good news. Other than that, everything else is status quo. The only other thing I changed is that the auditors have actually completed their fieldwork. They were just wrapping up the last time we met. So hopefully we're on track to present financials either in January and February, depending on when they're able to get us in the queue for the draft of financials and such.
Great. Questions? Okay. Thank you. You answer all my questions before I tap them and then I keep reading and there's the answer. Thank you for doing that. All right. Next item is our ACID recommendations for FY '24. And is that, Beth, you? That's yours, right?
That's mine. Okay. So thank you. So Dawn and I met with, there was a committee of nine of us, including Mr. Smith and Mr. Lawrence and representatives from Pine Hill and Chickering as well, and some educators to look at proposals that came forward as potential additions to Appendix C. And at this point in time, there are four we'd like to bring forth to you. The band director position formerly was just the high school. Now it's middle and high school. My notes here. It was originally a 1.5 ratio and the committee feels that it's appropriate to increase it to a 4.0 ratio. The one denominator being the 15, 11, 33, 1,511 dollars, 33 cents is one, so you multiply that by four. So again, it's now a six through 12 position for the band director. And this entails the work that happens before and after the school day, not within the school day. So Mr. Herman and Ms. Berry feel that they're doing between 16 and 80 hours of time with students. And that does not even include the setup, the breakdown, and all the communication that has to happen with teachers and parents and caregivers beyond that time with kids. It's grown significantly because of the music and campaign. It's grown from 20 students to over 60. And increased opportunities for play, including the pep bands that we have at basketball games and throughout the community events, hot dog, hot dogs and cool jazz, just another example. So certainly the program has grown, the demands have grown, the time that our director is needed has grown. And so we support that for your consideration. The second is the GSA at the middle school. This is a new, not an increase, but a new proposal. It's been in existence since 2019 as, and it's been past practice that we have a club in existence for three years before we move it forward to make sure it has a solid foundation and will continue to grow. It includes during and after-school events, including lunches by grade level and in-school field trips. And then the advisors who support the GSA student component also have done a lot of training with staff and educating staff and, and building policies and protocols, whether they're not formalized yet, but having conversations about what those could and should look like. So that is certainly something that we want to consider. The Science Olympiad Club, again, this is year three, a new addition. It includes 24 students and growing. They meet once or twice a month to work on their projects and they engage in roughly five competitions in a school year. And depending on their success, may go forward after that. The 2.0 recommendation for their ratio is because it's similar to the math team at 2.0, the mock trial team at 2.0, and the robotics team at 2.0. So it seems to fit right in line. And lastly, the swim coach position currently as a 4.0. And the ACED committee recommends that we move it to a 5.5 ratio. Since 2010, when the program started, the teams have been competing co-ed. So in any, I'm not a swimmer, but in any race, it would be boys and girls competing at the same time. Now there are races for just the males and races for just the females. And so the preparation time and the event time has doubled. So we're looking to increase just the lead coach position to incorporate the time necessary for all of the work involved and making sure that both teams are, are ready to compete at their meets. And we have looked at TVL teams and the stipends that Hopkinton, Westwood, Bedfield, Norwood, Norton, Weston, Wellesley get. It's certainly the request of moving up to a 5.5 is in line with those other towns. You know, with variations, Hopkinton's a little bit higher than what we're suggesting, but that because, that is because that coach also includes diving events. Others are a little bit lower because they have a pool on site and don't have to worry about the travel and the coordination. But it seems right in line of where we should be. I'm happy to give you specifics beyond that.
Yeah, we use indoor track for that one as well because that coach has to do both the different masters.
Both lineups?
Yeah.
Is this within the scope of what we can absorb in terms of these are new costs?
So they're not in your current version, so we roll them into the February version, version 2.0.
And are there any ACID positions, clubs, or whatever that have withered up and gone away in the last couple of years?
Well, one of the clubs that we have not been able to fill has been the Ultimate Frisbee.
Okay.
The person who had been doing it is actually doing it at another school where it's a lot more established as a league in that particular school. So there's, there's that one. We have brought the majority of them back online.
I think Ultimate Frisbee and the China Exchange, obviously, are the only unfilled after-school activities we have right now at high school. But I think there's like, we've been talking though about just looking at the other ones that are running and looking at the participation and making sure we move them. If there's sort of a fixed amount of money that we want to put towards extracurricular, are we getting to the clubs that are having the most activity? You know, the higher participation rate. So if we do need to shake it out a little bit, we did talk about looking at that.
So that, that would be my only question or request as we go forward with the budget. I, I don't, I don't have issues with supporting these. I just would like to still take a deep dive and make sure that we actually have people participating. I appreciate that every once in a while you have a, a club with an advisor who doesn't own any customers. So just making sure that, to the extent that we possibly can, that we've scrubbed that so that we can take the money that we have and apply it to where there definitely is a need. What other questions?
So the swim coach, were you saying we haven't adjusted it since 2010?
No, that's when it started.
That's when it started. And ever since then, it's been, up until 2020, it was co-ed, but now it's, it's running dual races.
And swim, if you remember, has been co-op, our team, co-op. Now we're back to our own team. But this was reviewed in line when they did the Appendix C review of all the sports, the coaching positions. So it's totally in line. It's just, has changed in its responsibilities. But I think we made sure it was falling in line with the other coaching responsibilities within the winter sports to make sure that there weren't, you know, we were in line with everything else. So there was consistency.
Other questions? Okay. Yeah, like I said, I support all of this with the caveat that we can just make sure that we have customers for all of our clubs. All right. This we do have to vote on. So I would like to invite a motion to accept the ACID recommendations as put forward by Superintendent McCoy for fiscal year '24.
Mark Keely, so moved?
Motion made by Mark Keely. Do I have a second? Second by Lynn Collins. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Just note that Kate Potter voted yes from Zoom. All right. Next item is the FY '24 proposed operating budget. And this is our first look, right?
First look. This is, as I say, this is your foundation. We've got a lot of work ahead of us, but it gives us sort of where we're starting from. Hopefully you had an opportunity to look through your budget binder, try to include as much background information initially just to get you up and running. Our basic assumptions though, for this fiscal year are, I was happy to take away in just, you know, five days a week in person. So I have removed that. And we're now just regular school operations with level enrollment. Just go to school. Exactly. I've included in your packet the budget guidance from the two towns. So you have Sherburne's and Dover's. They did not materially change over previous years. Dover continues with level service, but reductions were possible. And Sherburne is level funded. And with there's, where there's increases, we need to justify them. Obviously contractual increases and things like that, it's more of adding things to the budget. So I think we do a pretty good job in our budget presentations to justify any additions that we are bringing forward. We continue to align our budget with the district strategic plan. And although we took out in-person school, we are still continuing to assess students' needs during the multiple comebacks of COVID. So we still have some special services that we're providing, but in most cases, especially at the region, we have some Esser money to help with that. But it's good to think about the long term when you're looking at your budget. So as far as our key budget drivers, obviously our biggest expense is payroll. It is about 80% of our operating budget when you include the related benefits. This is one of those every three years, we come to the budget at this point and we don't have any contracts in place. Some of them, most, some of them are in process, some haven't started yet. But at this point in time, we do our best to estimate a reserve for all salary increases for every employee in the, in the district. And so that is sitting in your line item under Legal Services Reserve, School Committee Reserve. And we'll hold it there. And so we have some contracts settled in. And as you know, we'll go, we'll spread that to the various line items. Healthcare is one of our largest non-payroll line item. And we obviously never have our rates available right now, using an estimate of 8% currently. Definitely by the time we meet in January, I'm assuming we're going to have approved rates by West Suburban Health Group. We haven't set the board meeting yet, but they had hoped to do it in December, which I'm beginning to think that's not going to happen. But so we're holding 8%. I'm hoping that it won't be any more than that. And we don't really have anything unusual going on this year. If you remember, last year we had Fallon ruling off. That gave us a benefit for Blue Cross because with all the Fallon members going into Blue Cross, we actually saw a 20% reduction in our Blue Cross rate. So I guess our only strategy this year would be to see if we give more people to go towards Blue Cross because now that's one of our low-cost providers, which wasn't before. It was like one of our most expensive ones. So the good news too is that we're continuing to have about 40% of our participants in the high deductible health plan. As you know, even though we contribute towards the high deductible savings account for those people, those subscribers, it's still a savings net to net. So we will, it's been a while since we've done the re-education or the education about that because of COVID. But that's another initiative that we may look into, see if we can get some people to convert over from benchmark to high deductible. Of course, that will give us a little bit of savings. I think I gave you that sheet last month. This sort of shows you the differences in the premium rates. We have a few added positions, not very many, but you have a staffing summary in tab two. The two primary ones are, you know, we talked about last year, the literacy specialist. It was in version one of your budget, but we actually pulled it out and continued to fund it with Esser and Title Funds through a way last year just to make sure it was a stronghold position that we wanted to continue with. And then we've already talked about the athletic trainer. So that is now in your budget full, fully. And then there's a, a net reduction actually of 0.6 in special ed, which you can look at when you look at your staffing summary. And then as always, we do not roll into our budget impacts of retirement savings until after February 1st. So that will be in your version 2.0. We're continuing to do trend budgeting. And actually, if you look through, there's a lot of red. It's, you, I would have to say the region was different than the two locals. But that was a pleasant surprise for us to see how much red. I will have to give the high school departments, department heads sort of kudos for going through and suggesting some of the reductions where they know they haven't been spending their budgets. We also, you know, we're really good about one-time expenses. We pull them out, so we don't leave them in your budget. But we go through, and so that's some of those you'll see. But at the end of the day, we actually are showing a net crease, net decrease in operating expenses if you pull out the reserve that we put in for salaries. So I think that is a positive going for us. Student enrollment actually is a, is a huge budget driver for the annual assessment percentage. And this year, we are looking at a swing of about 1.25 higher for Sherburne. And just to put that in perspective for you too, I'd like to, I computed what that means. So if we did not have that percentage swing, Sherburne would have seen a $150,000 less assessment. But that swing is causing them, without any change in our budget, to see a $150,000 increase. So I, I think that's important to highlight because that's nothing that we can change. So I I think that's important to highlight because that's nothing that we can change. That's just a matter of the students that are are showing up at our doorstep.
Right.
Right now. Um, let's see. And then um, this is a a unique year too, because we have a change in the leadership at the state level. So the governor, uh when their their inauguration's not until January, they get um up to eight weeks to submit their first budget. So technically, the state budget is not due until March second. Usually we get it the third week of January. So that will have just, you know, we don't, we don't rely too much on the state money, but what we do rely on is the minimum local contribution. Um, and so that's where we'll be a little bit cutting it when you guys meet in March. But they are trying to provide districts with tools to use to calculate it on your own in the absence of a state-funded budget. So um, we've already, I attended one webinar today, and there's another one late in December to sort of help us walk through that. Um, but we'll see how that goes. But that's another sort of unknown that we are building our foundation on right now. Um, and then, as always, we're always busy working. Um, and so there are several initiatives under review that could have an impact on the budget. Um, and hopefully we'll have some of those um wrapped up by some in January, some in February, and definitely by March when we bring you your final. But we look at this as a constantly evolving process until you do your final vote in March. So where do we land? Uh, we're looking at about a uh three point eight five percent increase. Um, that's compared to last year's final approved budget of two point four four. Um, and then I sort of gave you the statistics for Dover and Sherburne's assessments. It's always helpful to you to sort of think of your timeline. I see one little uh time uh or date typo. It's January eighth, seventeenth is the joint meeting. So um we will meet on January tenth. There won't be another version of the budget, but we might have additional um information to share with you, like uh West Suburban. Uh, we have the joint meeting on January seventeenth, which would provide some additional information that may impact the budget. Um, and then we will present to the committee version two point oh on February seventh. And then we have our joint meeting with both uh town finance committees on February fifteenth. And then your final um meeting with the budget hearing and approval is March seventh. So that sort of gives you the timeline. I think this is the opportunity to, now that you have the numbers in front of you, if you have any additional questions, it's great to share them with your chair because then they can share them with us and we can then use some of those um opportunities to provide more information in January and February and March. Um, but I think it's a, having it, getting the budget out to you, one, we have to get it out for the town. But two, it just gives you time to sit with it um and not have to rush through and really sit back and look at the the details. This is the one opportunity that you have to see actually the line items that roll up to your monthly financial statements. Um, because that's a much more high-level report where this shows you how it builds up and how it rolls up. So I think hopefully we give you enough information in the notes um to provide you insight. And enough detail in the other sections uh to provide the substance um to to what really sort of um leads us to this. It is actually the starting point. Um, I think the one other thing um that we owe you that we are working hard on is just a capital plan, the capital budget for fiscal year twenty four. We have a little bit of work to do on that, so I didn't want to bring it out before, knowing that we were gonna make changes. So that will be actually on your January uh meeting. We'll bring that forward to you.
Okay. All right, uh, questions for Dawn?
Um, this is probably stupid, but um have you noticed whether in inflation? I realize that that salaries are our biggest, that that, you know, what we pay in fuel oil is a small part of our budget, but inflation, ha- have you noticed changes in 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 our expenses and i- is that a factor at all?
So I think we are seeing changes in our expenses, obviously supplies are more. But I think one of the um changes that we're seeing coming out of COVID is we're using less expenses. And I think that was some of what um the department heads in the high school were seeing. They operate differently. So much more is online now.
Oh, that's fascinating.
And so I think we're able to not have to increase a lot of our basic school operating expense line items because we are using less and so that money is is covering what we need. Um, and as you know, I've been hesitant to change um a lot of those line items, even though we've been showing um pos- negative or positive variances because I wasn't sure what the outcome was gonna be. But I think this year, so far, at least the three months that we've been in school, is sort of a telling sign that we're not quite using as much. We're being very resourceful. Um, I think so. Again, going back to spend smarter, I I feel like that's that's coming into play here.
That's great.
Elementarys, I will say I had to increase a lot of their expenses because I just think elementary schools function differently than the middle school and high school. So yes, we did see that um more so in their supply line items, having to increase it, but not at the the regional level, which is, which is good.
Heat?
So heat is not my problem. It's electricity is gonna be our problem. Um, heat, um, a new, a new rate's kicking in, um actually this month, and it's actually lower.
Oh, great.
Right. So gas, our gas supply line, we we locked it in back in May of twenty one.
Now I remember.
Yeah, right. So but electricity is the one that we're gonna see a forty percent increase in supply starting next December, so a year from now.
Okay.
But I'm hoping that our new E- EMS system, again, like you say, you know, it might cost more, but hopefully we can use a little less and sort of stay in the same place. I did up uh um electricity by the twenty-five thousand that we cut out last year just to put us back where we were.
Yeah.
Um, but we are gonna start looking at um our usage. And the one thing that we have no control over, and I really, I've gotta look at it closer, but our delivery cost, I think, has been really going up.
Yeah.
Um, I I think we all see that on our own home electricity bill. So at least we could control the supply.
Yeah.
Um, but the delivery is something that we don't have, and we can't con- contract any kind of fixed rate for that. Um, and that's where it used to be like, my supply was just a little bit uh more than um the delivery, and then it was equal, and now I almost feel like delivery's going up there. So that's something that between now and February, we're gonna take a little bit closer look and see what is happening to the delivery cost. Um, and then get a better feel of if we're making any impact on our usage. You know, this whole building was converted over to LED right before um, you know, COVID hit. So the problem is I don't really have a good base year because we keep having all these weird things happen. But I'm hoping that that has had some impact for us too. So um luckily, our utilities are a lot compared to our total budget. But if it's something that we can um control, it helps us be able to do other things. We're still benefiting from the net metering contract, and it must have been a really sunny summer. Seen some really large credits going through and then they drop off. Um, but uh, you know, that has been to our our benefit, and we've been yielding, you know, twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars um towards our utility um bill for that initiative that the school committee did back in two thousand sixteen, I believe. So that, that's, that's promising. Things like um our property insurance, obviously, it costs more to um, we insure at full replacement costs. And so you'll note in the, in the budget that I already know that they've come through, assessed some of our buildings and increased the property value replacement cost. So I'm seeing a five thousand dollar increase in our bill this year, which will roll into the following year. Um, so little things like that. But at the end of the day, they're small percentages of our our bigger budget. So I think of our bigger budget is really, the component is really just looking at the payroll. So the cost that we have for our employees and their related benefit costs, so.
Thank you. That was a marvelously complete and understandable response. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. You're welcome. Oh, yes, Kate, do you have any questions? Can we hear her?
I think so.
Oh, no, she's good. Okay.
I think I'm good. Thank you. I I can hear most of you well. Some of the people outside are muted, but but I think I'm following along.
Okay, good, good. Um, and then if you have any questions, like I said, feel free to um share them with Maggie. So just quickly going through, um, you have the summary pages, which I think is easy to look for revenue, and I, and I will highlight, I should say something on the revenue. So for the last, um, well, post-COVID, we have not been able to meet sort of the budget for our high school and middle school activity fees. Um, and so I've let it go, but I think this year I did bring it back a little bit in in how many students were expecting to participate in those. And that is um, information is actually, I provided a new schedule for you under the assessment. And it says that for the high school, middle school activity fees, you'll see that we're estimating a hundred and sixty-five students at the middle school and two hundred and twenty students at the high school. So that's what your fiscal year twenty four budget is built upon. We seem to be hitting the athletics. So we're leaving athletics um where it is, and in most cases we're he- uh hitting parking. But it was just, um, I didn't think it it made sense to keep carrying those higher numbers if we had not been able to meet them for a couple of years. If we go over, that's great, but I'd rather not uh count on money that we were, we have not been able uh to meet the last couple of years. And as you know, we always start around one of the budget using no excess, um, no E and D. So we will see how this year plays out as far as any unexpected revenues. I do think we're gonna see some unexpected revenues in our chapter seventy-one reimbursement because the cherry sheets have not been able to keep up with actual transportation costs, as you know, with the hybrid, the closure. And so I think they don't quite have that going for them, um, right? So I think we will see some positive variance from there, and that's the money that we then say we'll use against the fiscal year twenty-four budget as E and D. Um, so we'll know more about that definitely at your version two in February, because in January we'll see our first chapter seventy-one reimbursement. We'll have a feel of what they're, what we're gonna get, what their anticipated reimbursement rate is. Um, and then you also then just have a summary by expenses that really shows you um how the percentage of the total budget that particular category is, which I think is is helpful. I think the great news too is on the debt service in fiscal year twenty-five, the middle school's paid for.
Yeah.
Um, and so I think that's what we're sort of banking on for when we bring out some more of the higher capital cost years um in the region. So the more that we can defer some of these bigger items, it's gonna help the cash flow for the towns because that debt's gonna go away. And then that would be almost replicated, you know, replaced by some of the capital projects that we have. So I think that timing is sort of what we're trying to uh player, play around with to help with finances. Um, and then you have your big sheets um by line item, and then also a summary of staffing. And then um, we had put this back in fiscal year twenty-one, but a summary of anticipated grants. Because I think it's important for you to know outside of these pages what other costs that we incur that are covered by grants. Um, for those who like to get into the nitty-gritty, your assessment calculation is included with some of the backup. Um, this year I've included sort of the uh page off um Desi's site that sort of shows the foundation, MLC, the contribution. So remember, this is our net school spending. This is what we're required to spend by the state. Um, I was on a call today. Basically, they said there's very few school districts who just spend this. Most of us spend more. But this is the baseline um of what you should spend based on what Desi's computing on your enrollment. Um, and then a little more detail on some of the revenue accounts, just so you can see how those are built up. You have your um tab four, your ten-year enrollment history with the five-year projections. I will say, so one change that I made to the formula this year is regarding incoming fifth grade. I actually took the enrollment projections from the elementaries and brought those fifth grades in um versus doing three-year average, because it's actually more reflective if I'm pulling the actual numbers from Chikering and Pine Hill, right? Because you're gonna see that we definitely have different-sized cohorts. Um, and it can be, can be somewhat extreme. So I think that's gonna play into your projections a little more accurately to pull those numbers versus the three-year averages. So I did make a tweak um to that. But we're staying within, like, it doesn't, it has to take, you have to take a large swing of students at the middle school and high school to really make a difference
Yeah.
in your normal operations. It's not like the elementaries where you're down twenty, you don't have a class. Um, so I think that's why I say level enrollment, even though it looks like it's on the lower side, it's still really level enrollment for our operations. And then in tab five, just letting you know that January, you'll get your capital, have your capital plan, but I also put the debt in there, so you can see. It's getting close, final payment fiscal year twenty-five. Um, so this is, like I said, just the building, the starting point. There's still, especially for the region with health insurance, retirement, there's a lot that we don't know yet. Um, but hopefully, um, the pieces of the puzzle will start coming into play. And by March, we will have a pretty good um true budget of what we'll be looking for starting July of twenty-three.
Thank you. Questions for Dawn?
Dawn, my only question is with the swing of more students coming in through the Sherburne side? Because I I I was worked with you with the budget before. Are we preparing them that we're not gonna be able to give, you know, the money? We can't do anything about this. That's not gonna be any budgetary that we can pull back. It's just what it is.
Yes, I actually had about a ten-minute conversation with Dan just to explain that, and I specifically then computed what it was in the budget overview to really, to make it more identifiable what that swing, what that swing really is impacting and that there is nothing that we can do about that.
Well, unfortunately, they're building more things, which I think is going to increase some of the students coming in, so I don't, this is
Right.
It's gonna be a problem.
Right. Well, we'll, we'll figure, we always, we always figure it out. Um, you know, it may s- it may seem like, you know, every year's a hard budget year, but I said, I've been here long enough now. We say that every year, we always get it to work. So um, you know, I I I will, we look at some, you know, we keep saying we're, we're, we're not regionalized, but we'll look at the sh- the Pine Hill budget along with the Sherburne's assessment, see where we are there. Um, I will say just for your information, uh, the Sherburne budget, which covers out of district for three to twenty-two, has been hit extremely hard this year, and it's gonna roll into the budget for next year. So that's not gonna be our answer, and that is our answer sometimes, where they've had a reduction and that money's available to spread. Um, so we'll just have to get creative. But I think that we, we build a physically responsible budget, and so there's not a lot of room for us. So we just have to hope that some of these uh pieces that are unknown pieces fall into our favor uh and help us, you know, do what we can to um uh meet the needs of the two towns.
It does somehow always work out, because every year when I was working on it with you, I was like, oh, this is not.
I know. So I don't stress about it yet.
Okay.
Um, I think we'll, we'll figure it out.
Okay.
Taylor. If, if, maybe this is stupid, but if there are more students coming, are, 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 is the influx of students coming from Sherburne a result of new home building, or is it just like the families that move in have more kids?
So if you look at the um, it's, it's the class that graduated last year was heavily Dover, Sherburne, and the ones that are coming in are more even. It doesn't take much of that to like make, we're not talking about fifty student swing.
Right.
Um, and so that, if you look at that, if that's causing the biggest change in the assessment, was the graduating class was much heavier Dover than Sherburne. The class coming in is more equal, therefore you're gonna get the swing.
So it's not like there's like a neighborhood of new taxpaying homes.
No.
Okay. I'm just hoping.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
No.
Um, all right, thank you.
Yeah, it's usually bad. And we, so that's the funny, you know, it's funny what you're used to doing, but I always look at, okay, who's coming in and what grades coming in? What grades going out and how it's gonna impact us? But that was uh the issue this year, was it was a much heavily sw- um favored Dover class that graduated and a more equal class that moved into that, that number.
Yeah.
And so that does the swing.
Okay.
So just as easy as it swings to to Sherburne's way, hopefully next year it'll swing back to Dover's way.
Fingers crossed.
Fingers crossed.
Okay. Are we taking action on this?
Yes, I do need you to approve version one so that I can submit it to the towns.
Okay. I um am looking for a motion to approve the FY twenty-four proposed operating budget as presented by Dawn tonight.
So moved.
Motion by Judy Miller, second. Second by Lynn Collins. Any discussion?
Sorry.
Okay. Um, all in favor?
Kate's in favor.
Yep. Include Kate Potter. All opposed? Nothing. Motion passes six zero. Thank you for your presentation and um. Thank you for your presentation and.
And we'll get more like analysis, it's hard to do analysis right now because so many numbers are gonna be changing and it's sort of just not really fruitful use of time.
Yeah.
But the base numbers are there, and as things, as you know, when we do our presentations for the town, we'll get more into the specifics and the ups and downs and the causes, so, but I think there's, the budget driver section sort of did a little bit of that for you for this first pass.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dawn.
All right. Next on our agenda is the consent agenda, and there are three items on the consent agenda, approval of the minutes of the number eight, a list of grants, and a high school field trip. And I have to swing down to the bottom to remind myself what high school field trip is.
Close-up Washington DC.
Okay, thank you, trip to close-up. Do I have any questions on items in the consent agenda?
I have a question about how, how students get selected to participate, like what category students are doing that field trip.
So students have to submit a proposal to Mr. Bork, and what he tries to do is provide opportunities for, you know, in some cases, the first group of seniors that come forward, but then they also have to, you know, be able to work through those days, not have maybe, you know, an athletic conflict, whatever the case may be, but that's usually what happens, and it, and it usually works out fine, and if he does need to go a little bit bigger because he's got one more or something, he could generally work something out because he's gone long enough.
And so it's, it's, it's an invitation that's extended to all seniors and then just whoever chooses to?
Yeah, and it's typically seniors who are in his AP government classes, but it doesn't have to be that, he's had other exceptions in other years. Yeah.
And can I just add just a little more, this is, we're gonna start doing this on an annual basis, but bringing forward the, all the grants that we have accepted or have been, been approved for, and we've already submitted the budget for these, just to make it more transparent for you, just like we do for gifts. So if you have any questions about any of the particular grants, just let us know, we can provide you more information. Again, this is also in your budget book to show how these grants then are incorporated into our operating protocols.
Thank you. Other questions, other questions? Regarding close-up, I attended close-up when I was in high school, which is now like forty years ago, I think, and it was an impactful, it was an impactful experience, I just have pretty vivid memories, you know, being a, a student and, and interacting with kids from different parts of the country was a big deal for me anyway, so I appreciate that they still do it. All right, do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda with those three items?
Right, I have for a moment, we have a question about scholarship money available, and is it blind, is it need-blind in terms of who is provided the opportunity?
Yes, they simply have to reach out to me, and we already actually have two or three situations where that is the case, and we will be providing monies that we have both through student activities for scholarship, as well as a little bit of money that, that the close-up organization activity has had. Yeah, we always have that with all of our trips.
So yes, need-blind, and yes, both provided by close-up, the foundation, and also our student activities scholarship funds.
Thank you.
Okay. Other questions? Okay. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Lynn Collins, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Angie Johnson, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes six, zero, and let the record reflect that Kate voted to accept the consent agenda. Lastly, in your packet, just for your information, are the minutes from the Dover School Committee and the Sherburne School Committee, October meetings. And looking forward for the January tenth, Dover every year writes and submits a town report on the goings-on of every organization committee's board, and so I will be working on that based on last year's report, so thank you to the folks who wrote that last year. And we'll have that for you to review and accept so that we can send it forward to the town of Dover to put into their annual reports. Any other further items before we close? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, Angie, do we have a second? Mark Healy, any, any discussion? Okay. Hearing none, we are adjourned at seven forty-seven PM. Good night.